James Dyson.
Jenny Brown.
Brian McCormick.
Yes, Sam's not here.
I think he was gonna try to be here, but he's, if he's not here yet, I don't think that he will be able to connect. I think he said he's having, he might have internet issues.
Okay.
Okay. Next, the minutes from May the 7th, 2020, our regular meeting and the minutes from May 18th, which was our special meeting. I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes.
I move to approve them. Dyson moves to approve them.
I can second.
Thank you. Alright, vote. It's Brown.
Brown, yes.
Dyson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Spalding?
Yes. Okay, next is item number four, which is the approval of the agenda.
I move that we accept the agenda as presented for this evening.
Okay.
I second it.
I second. Alright, Mr. Dyson, second it.
Brown?
Brown, yes, approved.
Dyson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Spalding?
Yes. Item number five on the agenda is claims to be approved. I don't know if we have any claims. Do we have any claims, Zach?
There, there were no claims. I believe that those will be prepared for the next regular meeting, if any.
Okay. So item number six on the agenda is the old business discussion of the amendment to 2020 from 2020, altering the interview process and testing cutoff for eligible applicants.
So did everyone get a copy of the, there were some alterations made to the proposed rule change based on the discussions from the last meeting. Did everybody get a copy of that? It was in the email that was sent out with the agenda and the Zoom meeting information.
Yes.
Dyson did.
Okay.
I, I must have missed it somewhere.
Okay, so the, the, what was changed, I'll just go over it briefly, is that the proposed rule originally was gonna establish a mandatory number of panels with a, with a, each panel interviewing only up to 20 people. The new rule leaves it kind of, and it also kind, it established that the panel would be made up of five members, three from online, fire members, members of the fire department, one from the Jeffersonville Fire Merritt Commission, and one from the administration of the Jeffersonville Fire Department or from the Jeffersonville Human Resources. The changes, which were basically based on the discussion between Amy Emerson, Joe, and members of commission, where's that? To make it more flexible, because you don't know how many candidates you would have and each, to make it, the panels statistically fair to those involved, each panel would need to interview at least 20 people. So if you max them out at 20 per panel, that might be not a good idea. So I changed the proposed rule to basically make it so every interview process for applicants, you all would set up panels based on the amount of applicants. There's no set amount of panels that you have to create. You could do it each individual time, vote on the number of panels that you wanted. Also, the makeup of the panels would not be specified. You could just pull members from the Fire Merritt Commission, the Fire Department and the administration of the Fire Department or Jeffersonville Human Resources Office. So there's no three members online and one from each of the other two. But the panels can be established with two members of the Merritt Commission or, you know, it, it doesn't necessarily specify. It's just a more flexible rule. The percentages for the testing did not change. That was left at the cutoff being 70% being the minimum score. But you would still only interview up to 100 candidates. So if more than 100 candidates got greater than 70%, the panels would only interview up to 100 candidates. And at that point, if you wanted to, you could establish five panels. Or four panels. But there's no set amount.
Zach, there was no wording change about when we can't shut off the last meeting kind of quickly. Someone threw out the idea of every candidate had to be interviewed by each of the five panels or something. And that was going to be, everybody had to interview all 100 people.
So, so what I did actually, I think what she was saying is that you may want the ability to divide up questions between panels, depending, let's say, maybe you didn't have 100 applicants. You had 60 or so, and you had two panels each doing 30 interviews. And that maybe you would create a system where, or, or you had less than that would be a maybe better option. But each panel would have different questions that they would ask, but they would each get a chance to interview each of the applicants. I realize that doesn't really reduce the load that each panel is interviewing, but it reduces the number of questions that each panel is asking essentially. But that would give people a chance to be interviewed by multiple panels. That's in the rule currently, but it just says May.
Okay.
They don't, you can choose to do it that way, essentially, if, if people felt that that was, you know, a good idea for that application process because of the number of people who had applied, whether it be small or large, for, you know, whatever reason. But the rule is written so that there is some flexibility in there for, well, to, after the testing occurs, we know how many applicants will be coming in for interviews to structure the panels and the interviews in a way that is fair, but also reduces the load for the commission to be the only people interviewing 100 people.
Zach, just so, as you mentioned, not everybody was privy to some of those conversations we were having with Ms. Emerson out of, I guess, most of them.
She was, she was at the last meeting, so she, most of those were.
But I think that was the whole point of making sure that each panel had at least 20 interviews per panel, so that they could make sure that there wasn't any unfairness happening.
Sure. And I actually, I, I left that out. I apologize. So the other change is instead of maxing each of the panels out at 20 interviews, 20 interviews is the minimum per panel. So you would have at least 20 interviews per panel. So when you set up the number of panels, you'd want to think about that. That is a mandatory piece of the rule.
Okay, I've got one question for you, Zach.
Yes.
Okay, what if the, the candidates, say, number 95 through 105 people say take the test, have the same score? How do we determine the top 100 if there's 105 people, you know, with the passing score? And the last five or six might be tied at 70?
That I do not have a good answer for. I don't know exactly how that would work, but I believe that the way that tests are scored is a, they're scored against each other essentially. So I don't know that you would ever have a situation where you'd have people getting the same scores, but.
We've had, we've had, we've had that situation before, Zach. Spalding, where we've had the same exact score. As you mentioned, it's scored against each other. There's, it's a curved exam. In my opinion, it happened to be that the tied up area was the 100 mark, and it was 100 to 105. I think there were after, in my opinion, we would go ahead and interview 105 candidates.
I think that that would be a safe way to, to kind of accommodate a situation like that.
Okay, that was my only question. So does anyone else have any questions about the proposed rule change?
I do not.
Okay. So at this point, Zach, what do we need to do? Do we need to go ahead and vote on the approval of the change?
Yes, you would need to have a motion and potentially a second if there is one, and then if there is, take a vote. A majority of the panel of the commission would be needed to pass it. So you would need three members of four that are currently here to pass it. And just to be clear, the proposed rule changes a couple different rules and your own internal rules. It changes rules and procedure number two, sections three, six, and seven. Now, the largest changes are to number three, but in section, I'm sorry, three, eight, and nine. The, 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 the largest changes are to the applicant or to the personal interviews, but there is a change to the applicant rating section and applicant eligibility section. And those were meant to basically make it so that you could interview more than 30 people. And the other change was to change the cutoff in the testing to 70% rather than the mean, which was the prior rule.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed rule change. As it pertains, yeah, as it pertains to the personal interviews.
Brown can second.
Okay. Need to vote, need to vote.
Brown?
Brown is a yes.
Dyson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Spalding?
Yes. Okay.
So Joe, I'm, I'm, real quick, I'm going to send a copy of the amendments to the Fire Merritt Commission rules as a full document with the updated rules. I'm gonna copy you and Brian Emerson on that. Those need to be distributed to every member of the department. I know you all have your way of doing that, of posting notice, but I will need to get it.
Chief Emerson can put those on target solutions and they have to, Chief Emerson will have to actually verify that they've read it.
So when each, when each member verifies, if you could, there'll be a place at the bottom where you all can certify that every member has received a copy. You send it back to me. They go into effect 30 days from today.
Okay, next is item seven on the agenda, which is finalizing the dates for the applicant testing and interviews and promotional testing interviews for 2020 and testing sites. So what, what date did we decide on as far as applicant testing? Was it July the 11th or the 18th?
In the last meeting, we set testing for September 28th and promotion interviews for October 19 to 23.
So September 28th? Yeah, I wrote that down on another sheet of paper, so. What was that other date?
October 19 to 23 for promotion interviews.
So I believe that the notes that I have for promotions, and these were, these were sent by Amy Emerson as recent as this week. She had written exams taking place Monday, September 28th. Is that right?
Yes.
2020, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., and a review session from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. The Merritt Commission interviews and tactical assessments would take place during the week of October 19th through the 23rd. Which is what I had in my notes from our original meeting. Is that everybody's understanding of?
That's of October, right? 19th through the 23rd of October for the?
Yes.
And that's, that's for promotions?
That's for promotions.
Right.
Yes.
Do we determine what time on the, the 10th, October 19th to the 23rd? Do we decide what time?
There was no time given in Amy's, she just blocked off those days.
And what other questions, Zach? Does she say when she come down to go over the training as far as selecting questions and that sort of thing?
We had not gone over the date for the training for anybody who would be on the panel, but I think, well, and I, I just want to, I think that because this rule change happened in the middle of this, she didn't know whether she'd be coming down to train just the Merritt Commission members if you didn't pass a rule change, or if we would be setting up panels and she would be coming down to do more. I don't think it changes the timing of it, but we had not discussed the, the specific date yet. But I, I believe it happens like right before, is what she had said.
And the, these are dates, these are dates for promotion testing and interviews. What about for new applicant testing and interviews?
So I am trying to look, I've got so many emails from, see, the written exams.
I'm sorry, I've got, let's see, June 13th, obviously, was one that was in the meeting minutes. And interviews in July 11th.
So that's, that's what I have as the what was discussed in the meeting, but.
Are there still dates that'll work for her?
I think there was one day that did not, that did not work. And I have a full email with it, but I cannot find it. Zach? What I have is July 11th, 2020, and either August 8th or August 15th for the interviews. So application testing would be July 11th, and the interviews would be the 8th or the 15th.
For new hires?
For new hires.
We're gonna have to, ju- just for logistics, if they're gonna do one day for all the interviews, you're gonna be interviewing up to 100 people. You're gonna have to figure out where those interviews are gonna take place.
Another piece that we need to talk about is where exactly we are going to conduct the interviews in order to comply with the social distancing.
And also, there was a recommendation too, depending on where the testing would take place, is have two testings, you know, have one testing. When it's over, then bring in a second group and finish up.
Yes, so applicant, so my note from Amy says that she, July, July 11th for applicant testing is fine. And that yes, that the written interviews would be either August 8th or August 15th, and that you all could decide which of those dates works.
Zach, did she mention, as far as sending IPSP down for training? Are they gonna try to send? Is that gonna be one training class? Are they gonna try to train the panels and the commission all at once for promotions and for?
I don't know if they'll do from, I, I, I would think so, that they could do it that way. But I mean, that makes the most sense in terms of resources, but I've not received, she not said that she would do both applicant and promotions testing at the same time. I know the plan was to do all the panels at the same time for applicant testing. Because they're, they're taking place at a different time period, and the promotions testing is different than the, the promotions interviews are different than the application interviews, because they're gonna be conducted by seemingly different parties. So just to go over the dates real quick again, promotions, September 28th, 2020. And for the testing, in October 19th through the 23rd, for the promotions interviews. For applicant testing, it would be July 11th. And for applicant interviews, it would be August 8th or the 15th. The commission can decide now which, which of those dates they'd like to reserve.
And the only time that has been locked in was for promotions, and that's September 28th for the reading exam from 9:30 to 12:30.
That's what's in her, the book summary basically that she sent out, because there's another, I think it's the third item on the agenda today, but we had a meeting earlier this week with Mike McCutcheon to discuss the reading list for promotions. So yes, on her announcements, the Monday, September 28th for the promotions testing would be from 9:30 to 12:30 p.m., 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. With the review session from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then the Merritt Commission interviews and the tactical assessment would just take place during the week of October 19th through the 23rd.
Right.
Zach, I'm looking at the new hire interviews, either that August 8th or 15th. Those are both on Saturdays. Is that intentional?
I believe that that's intentional. I think that, but those were the dates, I think the last testing process, those were on the weekend. One thing we did want to go over was whether or not, I don't think we wanted there to be a problem with any like opening of public schools or something like that, where people weren't able to make it to the interviews or something like that, because they had to take care of their kids or take them to school or, you know, do something like that. But I, I think that the choice was made to hold it on the weekend.
Yeah, I mean, I believe that's, that's the way I've done it before.
I'm good with, I'm good with either the 8th or the 15th. That doesn't matter to me.
Okay, the 15th is better for me. So do, we put that to a vote?
Yes, so if you want to make a motion to accept the promotions dates and times of September 28th, 2020, for promotion testing from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And with a review session from 1:00 to 2:00 at the same day, with Merritt Commission interviews and tactical assessments during the week of October 19th through the 23rd. That'd be the first motion. This is for promotion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the written exam for Monday, the 28th, and 30 to 12:30 p.m. with the review session from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. And also the Merritt Commission interviews and tactical assessments during the week of October 19th through the 23rd of 2020. I would make a recommendation that we approve those dates.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's vote on it.
All right, Brown?
Brown is a yes.
Dyson?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Spalding?
Yes. Okay, then the, the other thing we need to vote on is selecting the applicants.
TA, I can make a motion that we set the applicant testing for July 11th for new hires and interviews for August the 15th.
Okay, I second it.
Do we want to set time for that, guys, while we're voting?
Is that necessary right now?
I, I think, I honestly think that it would be a bad idea to set times for it. Right now, I think we leave those dates open for IPSP to make the announcement with the times that they're gonna be here for.
Joe, do you happen to know when they've been done in the past? I mean, it's a Saturday. They try to do those early or?
Yeah, so historically, I think, if I'm not mistaken, last time was at 8 o'clock on the call. Does that sound right to you?
Yeah, that was about what time we, we started.
And then, and they're pretty strict on that Troy, Troy, and they, they shut the doors and seal them up right when the testing starts, so.
Is there any, I mean, is there a reason to not set it for 8 o'clock?
Well, I think someone.
Zach, you want to check on it and see?
I'd, I'd like to be able to at least like, check with Amy and make sure that they're gonna be down at 8 o'clock before we do an announcement that kind of confuses people.
Well, I've got the motion on the table for the dates pending times yet to be determined.
Okay, and I said I second, I second it. So.
Sorry, Brown?
Brown, agree, yes.
Dyson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda is item number eight. And it's new business concerning the announcement of testing material for the promotional testing for 2020.
Before we move on to the next item, I do want to bring up what Joe was talking about with the testing site, because this has been a question from Amy. Do, because of the coronavirus, we, if we're going to test on a single day and possibly have 100 or more people taking the exam, there needs to be some type of process for, or, or a site that can house that many people. Or some type of procedures set up with, you know, masks and other things that people can get at the door before they come in. Joe, do you know of a, a testing site that's usable like that?
We use, so as most of you know, we used Jeffersonville High School cafeteria area last year, or last hiring process. Are, are we, we're talking about the hiring? Are we talking about?
We're talking about the hiring right now, yeah.
No, it's testing.
And FYI, I think we've got, we're 250 applications right now. So we're not talking about 100. We're talking about
Well, yeah.
Yeah. I think that that was an ideal spot. I think we had almost 300 people there last time for our, for our applicant, or for our testing. I don't know that that will meet social distancing requirements. And I don't know how anyone feels about bringing it up in different locations. I did like the idea, Mr. Spalding, if IPSP was open to it in different waves, maybe a more.
Way, okay, sure. And if that date's reserved, I mean, they may be able to do like one early morning session, one.
How long does it take to do the test?
I think it's about three hours.
Okay.
That would give time for two, two sessions.
And maybe even a clean, or something like that, right?
Yeah. So I, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that that's one thing that we're gonna have to consider when, when setting all this stuff up, but that's, that's all I had.
So my question is, I wasn't in charge last year, but who contacts Jeff I to see if we can use the school? And if not, what about the Ken Ellis building? Who would contact them?
Joe, would the members of, like, the department or the administration have the ability to contact the high school, or should it come from me?
Between Chief Emerson and I, I think we can, we can make that happen if that's a request, if that's, if that's what we're. Between Chief Emerson and I, I think we can, we can make that happen if that's a requi- if that's, if that's what we're interested in doing. I think the Jeff High location bigger than the Ken.
Oh, yeah, it is, yeah.
Yeah, so I say, I, I mean, historically, Mr. Spalding, it would be, I think it has been the president, but we can take that. If you want us to do it, we can.
Yeah, I just didn't know. I mean, if you don't mind doing it, that'll work. If not, you know, I can contact them.
I'll get with the administration and collectively between the two of us, between the two, have something to report back at the next meeting as far as location, if that's all right, Zach. Do you think that's okay?
I think that's fine, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Joe. And like I said, item number eight on the agenda, the announcement of testing materials. And I've got a copy of it, I believe, Zach, as far as what the materials are gonna be used.
So just, just to be clear, there was a vote, I believe, that took place in February that you all approved using the same testing materials as last times, and this is for promotions. When the department and I went to IPSP to discuss use of those books, we had a couple books where we were worried that being able, the, the applicant, or the promotions, people up for promotions would not be able to get access to those older books. So there were some changes made to the proposed testing materials. About half of them stayed the same. There were two, three changes, though. So I think you'll see in the list that was provided that the, the, one of the new books is the first one on there, the Fire Apparatus Driver Operator Pump, Aerial Tiller Mobile Water Supply. And that would exclude questions pertaining to tiller operations and other things, but this, basically, this, this document right here, you would just be approving using these books through IPSP's announcements and the decision by the department on what questions to exclude.
What the document are you looking at there? What are you?
The summary of books for promotions testing twenty-twenty. So I believe that first one consolidated two of the books that were used the last time, and was an updated version of both. So it's one book rather than two. And the second book, which was Fire Engineers Handbook for Firefighters One and Two, stayed the same as two thousand eighteen. The Structural Firefighting Initial Response Strategy and Tactics Second Edition was updated. And the other two books on that list stayed the same. And those would be for Fired Emergency Services Company, the fifth edition, and Command and Control ICS Strategy Development Tactical Selections, second edition. So I think that balanced the department's concerns of having to buy new books, but also making sure that people who are entering the promotions process would have the ability to get those books if they wanted to.
Zach, we're gonna order those.
Okay, great. So I, and I just wanted to, the board to be aware that the, if you all, in your all's internal rules, you all approved the books. You did approve prior to this, the, using the same materials, but I don't believe that that's gonna be a viable option, so. If these books are acceptable to the department and the board, I would say that you need to take a vote to basically use these books in the announcement for the promotion testing for this year.
So this is a change from our previous approval?
This is a change from the previous approval, and it's the, the question, some of the, some of the books are pretty large, I think, and the department has specifically, Mike McCutcheon's gone through and looked at some of the, the sections and said that they, they wanna cut down the material that each individual may have to study. There were, like that first book, it excluded questions pertaining to tiller operations.
Up to sixteen and seventeen, yeah.
Yes, and.
Chief, you said you guys are gonna purchase the books so people will have access to them?
Yeah, upon y'all's approval.
Okay. I mean, I'll be glad to make the motion then that we modify our approval of materials for promotions to this new, what is it, attachment?
And I would just say that the, the only other change was that Mike McCutcheon did go through Firefighter One and Two, the Indiana Edition, and recommended that sergeants, lieutenants, and captains only have to review chapters one through twenty-three of that book. That was the only other change. So that'd be the, the second book in that list, and it would, it would only include chapters one through twenty-three.
But all materials and books will be available to anybody that wants them at the station houses?
Yes.
Okay, then I make a recommendation that we'll.
We just need a second on my motion then.
I can second. Brown can second.
All right, Brown?
Brown, yes, agree.
Dyson?
Yes.
McCormick? Spalding?
Yes. Okay, number nine on the agenda, under attorney comments. So you have, or, Mr. Zach?
I have nothing. I just wanna, again, I wanna thank the depart- I wanna thank the members of commission. I realize this has been a long month with a lot of meetings, but.
That's the way this whole year is gonna go, right?
Yeah, I just wanna thank you guys for being available, especially today on a Friday, to talk about these issues. So, thank you all, and I wanna thank Joe and the chief as well for everything that they're doing right now, as well as other members of the department.
Thanks, Zach, for keeping us in line.
All right, next, next is, is you, Joe, from Local five-five-eight.
Well, likewise, thanks to everybody for being available, especially on a Friday. In the spirit of the conversation that we're having in these special meetings and why we're having them, I wanna let you guys know that as soon as we, the discussion started about the new panel, the new hiring process, I've had several, nearly all of the, of the minority members of my department reach out and want to be a part of the hiring panels, and they're really excited about the new method of interviewing. So I don't think we're gonna have any problem building these panels and be settling well with everybody, and everybody seems to be pretty excited. So thanks again for everybody's time, and I think this is a great change, and I appreciate y'all being a part of it.
Okay, next. All right, next is from the administration to chief. You have any comments?
I, I'm here with Joseph. Appreciate all y'all's help with this situation. I think it's gonna be a very, very useful, a, it's gonna be good. Appreciate all y'all's time and your effort for helping us get to where we're getting to today. So thanks again. I appreciate you.
All right, and does anyone on the Merit Commission have any comments?
Do you all have, does anybody have any numbers on how many applicants we've had? Any update on the numbers?
Two fifty.
All right. All females, right?
I hope so.
We hope so, Jenny.
I hope so, too.
All right, if no one else has any comments, I make a motion that this meeting be adjourned.
I second.
All right, Brown?
Agree.
Dyson?
Yes.
Yes.
Spalding?
Yes.
All right.
All right, Mr. President, announce is adjourned.
Uh, meeting's adjourned. I just need to speak with our secretary for a second.
Yes, sir.